You can just well stay standing.
Good evening. Can everybody here stand for the Pledge of Legions, please?
If you're able.
Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and just as for all.
We'll call, there's just Sean, Bob, and I here.
I would move for approval of the tonight's agenda.
I'll second that motion.
Motion of second to approve agenda. All in favor, sing with saying aye.
Aye.
For the same say of pass with all present. Primary and final plat Industries West. Want to read the public hearing first in the background?
Yep, that's fine.
The Wade Park Plan Commission will hold a public, hold a meeting at City Hall, 1913 Avenue North, at six thirty PM soon thereafter, September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, to hear the following request. Request of James W. Miller Revocle Trust for review of primary and final plat of Industries West plat lined between Highway twenty-three, Julip Road, and County Road one thirty-eight in the city of Wade Park, Stearns County, Minnesota. Public hearings opened at six thirty-two.
Planning Commission members, folks in attendance, anyone watching at home. This is Industries West plat for preliminary and final plat review. On screen, I've got the general subject area outlined. This is the entirety of the area that's being planted, even though the, the actual anticipated activity would be on lot one, block one, which is at the northeast section of this property. I'll scroll a little bit through. This rotated copy here shows the anticipated lot one, block one, where the actual development is being proposed. For reference, this is just south of County Road one thirty-eight and just to the west of the Stearns County Household Hazardous Waste Facility. The property is currently vacant and is being configured as a three parcel subdivision. Lot one, block one being prepared for sale and development, and outlots A and B being retained by the current owner for future sale and development. No activity proposed for those outlets at this time. They would have to be separately planted to a lot block designation before any development could occur. The proposed parcels do meet and exceed minimum parcel criteria within the underlying I-one light industrial district. A proposed service industrial type use is anticipated for lot one, block one. At this time, we're not able to identify the specific use that's being proposed. It would be a permissible use within the, the light industrial district. City staff has been working with all parties involved for several months now. There is a preliminary site plan that we can share that has been submitted by the applicant, just to give an idea of what the, what the site development would look like there. With the support of the city, Stearns County was also gracious enough to work with the, the applicants and the potential buyer to formally vacate an easement that they had along the eastern side of the property adjacent to their household hazardous waste facility. They've also provided their formal review and comments regarding the plat. That's something that's required because we would be having frontage along the County Road, County Road one thirty-eight in this instance. They've advised that they will allow separate accesses for both lot one, block one here with the proposed development and a future development for outlot A. One access for per parcel if they choose to go that route. The developer, anticipated buyer, and the city staff have been collaborating on a development agreement for the property, which would be required due to the extension of Fifth Street South and associated public utilities that will be required for that project. You can see Fifth Street South is noted in the photo. That currently terminates in a cul-de-sac just past the driveway for the household hazardous waste facility. That will be extended into the, the subject property and have a little bit of street extension there. So that is something that we would trigger development agreement for. As part of that development agreement, we are also requesting with the park board some flexibility in looking at it, handling the payment in lieu of Parkland dedication, having the option to address that through the development agreement versus simply requiring it at a time of signature on the plat, just because it's something gives an option for all parties to defer that until the buyer would take ownership of the property. We staff is supportive of the preliminary and final plats as submitted. This request does have the public hearing component. The public hearing would be open after my, my recommendations here. My recommendation would be approval of the preliminary plat with following conditions. Number one, property is subject to requirement of a development agreement with the city of Wade Park. Number two, separate plating of depicted outlots to a lot block designation and associated requirements for payment in lieu of Parkland dedication are required prior to any development or building permit for them. Number three, property is subject to all requirements set forth via Stearns County Highway Department Road Certificate, which is to be required with plat. And number four, number four in your packets, I do have an edit for a little mistake that I had there. Property is subject to requirement for payment in lieu of Parkland dedication as recommended by park board and established by city council. In the, in the recommendations in the packet, I have any required Parkland dedication fees must be paid prior to a fixing of city signatures upon the plat. That's our typical standard, but I would request adding, adding the verbiage or as per terms of development agreement. Provided that conditions of the preliminary plat are satisfied, I'd recommend approval of the, of the final plat. That would conclude my report.
Thank you, John. This is a public hearing, so if anybody has any input for or against, please come up to the podium and state your name and address.
I just have a question. Queen Donovan, we've got property out on one thirty-eight. When you were talking about the easement on the east side of the property, is that?
It's, it was right in this vicinity, kind of nearby, if you follow this line of trees, north and south here. That was something that was held by Stearns County.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments they would like to make?
I move we close the public hearing.
Second that.
We got a motion and a second to close public hearing. All in favor, sing with saying aye.
Aye.
Public hearing closed at six thirty-four with all present.
John, the existing two juts out in, in the entire entirety of this, are those existing businesses now?
Sorry?
Those two little juts out in this map, the outline here. Are those existing businesses now? Is the lower one vacant?
The lower, the, the, the one that's extend, that pushes out to the little jut out on the north side, that's the household hazardous waste facility. That is existing business that's been there about, I want to say, ten years.
Yep.
The southern one, there's nothing on that parcel. You may recall that, that, that was a Miller property that was sold to the mix, CWMF.
Okay.
I want to say.
Okay.
Year and a half, two years ago, maybe.
Okay.
But it's, it's currently vacant.
Okay. Then the entirety of the property that we're, we're talking about would be to the, to the southern boundary of the hazardous waste property line, correct?
Yep, that would be, that's, that's lot one, block one. That's where the actual construction is taking place. Or would be taking place if everything moves forward. The entirety of the plat actually covers everything that's in red on your, on that aerial map there. They're just, their decision must have put everything else in an outlot, just to kind of clean it up a little bit for the time being.
Okay.
But those would still have to be planted on a case-by-case basis as development may occur as it comes along.
This being not a CUP, can we put conditions on it?
No, not, not on a plat. Basically, you can, you can modify the, you know, the recommendation motions, but there's really not a lot of regulatory additional things above and beyond we can do as long as the, the plat dimensionally meets standards, like width and area things, which they do.
Can you go back to the previous map on the screen now, the, showing the parking area and so on? I'm in these storage area. There you go. My concern is, we don't know the type of business that would, is interested in going in there. And I under, I can understand that. But my concern is, we have a, a storage area and depending on what goes in there, should there be undesirable visual effects from a storage that takes place there and so on and so forth, have we any way of cleaning it up?
As far as, you know, because it is a storage area, and we haven't really addressed it because this is purely a concept, but there will be some fencing and those things required for, for the industrial standard. So there'll have to be some, some level of fencing or screening. I, knowing the type of use that's going in there myself, I, there details at this time I can't. I have very high confidence it's not going to be a, a problem. I think there's going to be a lot of stability with this, with this user. I don't expect it's one that will turn around and leave in a, in a, any reasonable amount of time and, and become a, become a nuisance for us. I would bet pretty heavily, I think this will be just fine. But they will have to provide, they do have the area known for outside storage area, so they'll have to, they'll have to do some fencing and things for that. Whether they do a, through fencing or plantings or things, that's up to them. We will, that's something we'll work out.
I would just somehow like it noted that there should be, yeah, reasonable screening or something if.
Absolutely. It's good to note.
That was my main concern. And each, each of the, the outlot and the main business lot, block one, lot one, block one, will each have their own driveway?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, that's something they, they had worked through that with the county. I think they would have the, the option to share if that came down the road and that was the preference, but they, they were each granted their own access. It, it just gives a little bit of added flexibility for the, you know, the, the current owners if development is pursuing that, you know. Some businesses and buyers will be very firm that they want their own access and that works a little bit better in some cases, and the county was amenable to that.
I guess I missed it. What is the entirety of the acreage of the property we're doing?
I believe it's nineteen point oh four for lot one, block one. I'd have, I'd have to look further for the entirety of the acres on everything.
Okay. Not serious, I was just wondering if it's a large enough area that, okay.
Yeah, the, all the parcels meet minimums. I, sorry, I don't have the, the entirety of everything in front of me. I'm sure it's, it's probably in the hundreds.
Okay. I guess that's my, my main concern, so. Uh, yeah, I guess I would make a motion for approval of the preliminary and final plat, that we can consider them together, John? I would make a motion for approval of the preliminary and final plat as, as red and with the terminology of conditions that John read earlier.
I'll second that motion.
We got a motion and a second. All in favor, sing with saying aye.
Aye.
Motion approved with recommendations.
Four.
For those in the audience, applicants, we expect this item to go to the city council on the next city council meeting for Monday, September twenty-sixth.
Wade Park will hold a public hearing. Wade Park, nineteen thirteenth Avenue North, six thirty or soon thereafter, Tuesday, September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, to hear the following request. Request of Crossroads Lofts and Shops LLC for amendment to planned unit development to allow for establishment of an entire ground floor to multifamily residential units. The property is legally described as lot one, block one, Crossroads Lofts and Shops at three sixteen Second Avenue North and two oh five Third Street North. Public hearing opened at.
Planning Commission members, folks in the audience, the planning commission members, you may recall that this, this project dates back to about twenty eighteen when this was first in front of you some, some years back, and all the time goes quick. This property was initially reviewed and approved as a small mixed-use planned unit development. It was considered a planned unit development at that time due to the requested reduction in setbacks and parking requirement needed to support the development, which was, I basically considered at the time somewhat of a trial for small-scale redevelopment to see kind of, you know, how it worked and seemed to fill in a, a parcel there and a little bit of a test case for us as we, you know, if we would see kind of continued interest in that. Was built out in, in twenty nineteen and since, since that time, the applicant is now requesting amendment to the planned unit development to allow utilization of the full ground floor of the property for residential purposes, basically turning it from about a seventy percent use that was approved initially residential to one hundred percent residential. The proposal would call for the conversion of the current retail space on the ground floor adjacent to Third Street North from that current vacant retail, retail space to four single-bedroom apartment units. This project, when it was approved, it was approved with six single-bedroom apartments on the second story, as well as an allowance to, to utilize the north portion of the ground floor for two additional apartments should the market dictate. Those were eventually built out accordingly. As you may be aware, the, we don't typically allow ground floor residential in, in the established B-one limited commercial district, although we can do exemption through the planned unit development process. Just a little background on this particular property, while the, the residential components have been fully leased in spring of twenty twenty, shortly after its build-out, discussions with the applicant, notice they've been unable to lease the, the retail spaces despite marketing pretty aggressively. The applicants have submitted some documentation regarding current market vacancies in the, the Wade Park and St. Cloud market that would be comparable for, for this property, kind of the, the same space, and we've, we've got a higher-than-usual factor of retail spaces that are kind of competing against this particular one as well. Something that, that's worth noting that I think is playing into a number of different things is when this, when this project was mobilized and undertaken, we didn't have the reality of some of the, the fallout that has happened after COVID and its impacts on the, the retail market, which no one really could have planned or accounted for as a part of the project consideration there. Given the nature of the development is primarily residential from the get-go and its previous approval and that the current market, the owner and broker have advised that they, they now believe the highest and best use of the property, property to be fully residential. In this instance, we do have some, some precedent for a similar use very, very nearby. Just a little bit to the west, there's a similar older building, which was developed prior to current ordinance. It is, you know, as a smaller apartment building, and it's, it's not created or exhibited any issues of concern for the city despite being, you know, smack dab in the middle of a, of a commercial area there. One, one item I, I know that was of interest, you know, given the, some of the constraints of the initial development with pushing the building out to the setbacks and adjusted size on the parcel was parking. At the time of the appro, initial approval, the parking demand for the property, and that was based on the combined residential and retail components, was twenty-eight stalls, but through that planned unit development approval, we did grant a, a reduction in that. That was due to the, the anticipated shared parking between residents and businesses. The idea was that residents would be gone during the day to some degree, not always. While, while they'd be there at night, and that would flip, and businesses would be more likely to utilize it during the day. Parking really hasn't proven to be an issue there, at least that I've seen. I think the, the applicant can speak to that as well. They've done some monitoring of the property. You can see in the picture here, there's a, you know, a handful of cars. Obviously, not having the retail component active plays into that. But when we do the calculations, adjusting for, you know, a request to convert to fully residential, the parking demand actually drops because the, the, the retail component at their square footage, including the two apartments that were built out on the ground floor, that would require twelve stalls. The conversion of the retail to four apartment units would actually be reduction from twelve to eight due to a little, little lower parking demand for the apartment units of two per unit. Additionally, it's probably worth noting that all these units are single-bedroom and the ones that are in there and the ones that are proposed. So even though they require two per unit, the realistic demand probably a little lower. More likely to have single folks in there than, you know, larger, larger apartment units, even though the, the demand would be similar on technical parking. So it's, it's realistic that your, your actual parking demand is less than we may require. In short, the, under a conversion to fully apartments on the, on the ground floor, the parking demand drops and actually becomes within city code standard. So a parking reduction would not technically be required anymore. Additional component that's worth noting is, at the time of the original application, the property to the north was not a part of the, the ownership. Since that time, the, the owner of the property did acquire that, that house to the north. So in an absolute worst-case scenario, you know, something, there's a heavy parking demand or a, a party or some sort of event that draws a lot of people, that would be available for some overflow parking as well. I've not received any, any complaints regarding parking with this property, and I, I do believe the existing parking availability to be sufficient to support a conversion of ground floor retail to residential units. I believe that, given the, the, a number of aspects here, the confluence of the previous approval of this property, it was approved as primarily residential in nature, the current commercial market really couldn't be anticipated at the time of the initial approval. And, and a specific instance to this property, and really this one alone, just the way it was done, is a planned unit development. The extension of allowing full use of the ground floor for an additional four one-bedroom residential units would not be inappropriate. I, I think it does fulfill a little bit of a, a niche that we may have a little bit underrepresented here as far as, you know, a, a little bit higher-end, kind of, a little bit more upscale, single-bedroom option as a, as a renter that is kind of hard to come by, particularly in Wade Park, where we're, we're trying to promote businesses that bring good jobs and, you know, want to have different housing options for, for kind of different people on, on that side. I, I think it's, it's a small, small niche, but it's something that this, this helps fulfill. And we do have the, the precedent nearby for a, a smaller apartment unit that's coexisted well with its surroundings since it's been constructed, even though it's kind of in similar circumstances, being in a commercial district. I am supportive of the request and, and would recommend approval with the following conditions, and some of these are, are pretty, pretty similar to the initial approval that we did some years ago. Number one, design and configuration of additional ground floor dwelling units shall follow documents as reviewed and approved by the planning commission and city council. Minor amendments may be approved by planning and community development director. Changes or amendments deemed as major shall require additional review and approval by planning commission and city council. Number two, property shall obtain and maintain rental license for rental of apartment units. Occupancy is subject to all city ordinances. Those would be my, my comments and report, and we'll turn it over for questions or for comments from audience.
Okay, it is a public hearing. If anybody would like to stand up and speak for or against, please do so. State your name and address.
My name is Don Blonigan. I live at three forty-six Second Avenue Northeast, and I am opposed to this. I'm just not buying this, that this less parking is going to be needed. This is already a very crammed quarter. It's hard to get in and out of. I know I lived there, but I don't have to get in and out of there, but the, there is no, also no green space there whatsoever for that building. At the time it was built, he did not own that property to the north. And it was my understanding that that property was going to get torn down and made into a parking lot. Well, I don't see that happening either because that's been re-roofed and remodeled on the outside, it's been painted, and there's been some remodeling done on the inside. So I'm stating my case. I'm opposed to it.
Anybody else like to make a comment?
My name is Bob Sauer. I live right just about across from the apartment house. And as long as there's no parking on the street, I have no objections. But it's hard enough getting out there, especially with that big bush growing there in the corner. You can't see nothing. People come around the corner and they, they go in the opposite lane, and if there's cars going to be parked there, they're gonna, I just don't want to get run over there. So if there's no parking on the streets, if we can go with that and believe in that, I'm all for it. I have nothing against it, so long as I can get in and out. Thank you.
Anybody else with comments for or against?
My name is Justin Girk, and I live at one twenty-five Third Street Northeast, which is directly across from the apartment building in the corner. I'm names, are neighbors with Bob Sauer. I strongly oppose this. I know that we can all stand here and talk about the mathematics of it. Okay, we require this many parking spots per, but let's be realistic. If we have one, a one-bedroom apartment, on average, there's most likely going to be two cars at that apartment building. Okay, there's apartments on the west side of that building and on the east side of that building. They're not on the north side of the building. There's a, a fire hydrant already on the west side of the building that one of the tenants parks in front of every day. On the other side of the fire, fire hydrant is a dumpster. So my concerns are A, parking, B, when we move snow, where do we put it? Okay? Last year, we're pushing snow out into the street, down the street in front of his, well, the property he now owns. With these additional residences. With these additional residences, the dumpster is going to have to be bigger. I mean, I already pick up trash six days a week in my front yard. We're bringing more people in on a consistent basis. These are some of the concerns. I know it might not seem like a big deal to you guys, but you guys don't have to live in it every day. You don't have to look at it every day and you have to be around it every day. I'm sure I can speak for Bob a little bit in that we, every year, we feel like we're the only two left and we're getting squeezed out and this just makes it a little bit worse. So again, I, we oppose it and that's all I have. Thanks.
Anybody else would like to speak for or against?
Hi, Jim Rakshani. I'm the owner. Let me give you just a little short background of what the building is. You know, as John indicated, the building was put in service late two thousand nineteen. We have eight occupants there, all of which are professional with the ranging from a physician from central care to a district manager for a big fine company. They're all singles, with one exception of a, a couple that live in the west side of the building. He parked now in the garage that is owned by the, in the north side of the building. At no time, we have more than seven cars. The video of the parking lot can attest to that. Units are very high-end units. We have actually, the majority of the folks who are in there are the original people, so we have little less turnover there. We had hardly any issues with the city, police department, what have you. The building behind the property did, but this building, we never had an issue. There are twenty-five parking stalls. Eight, sixteen of each of most, or ninety percent of the time are vacant. There are actually more potential of parking issue with the retail than it is residential, as John indicated. So I, I guess the argument of parking is perhaps non-existent from my point of view.
Jim, can you speak a little bit to the snow removal and how you handle that?
Okay.
I know it's not ideal there because it is tight for snow removal, but just, what's your methodology for that?
Yes, well, we haven't had, the last three years, we had a lot of snow, especially last year. Never had an issue. We had to push some of the snow from the side to the next lot. But they will, the, the snow removal has never been an issue, most of which at the very end, because there was no parking at the very end between us and the east side of the building, between, that was piled up there, both of us. If there's any extra snow, the holiday, we have, we have never, you know, had to do that the last three years, so that, that, the remedy for that, so we that I don't see as an issue coming up. I guess all in all is the improvement. I, and I, I spoke with Bob across from us. I guess I haven't talked to Justin, but I, there was, there has never been one issue of anyone parking on the street, nor have any problem with the people there. I guess leasing part, probably Mr. Schmidt can talk about that, or we'll call it banker. We have tried to lease the last three years. It just, we had a range of probably from Indian restaurants to Somali restaurants, to nail salon, to hair salon. None of which probably didn't materialize to the end. It did not, I did not see fit to the property. I did not want to congest the whole area with having more traffic, so we did not take any of those because of the, the, just, just the mathematics of the rental situation and the, the whole condition of which, you know, was not really presented for, fit for the whole building. So I, I guess this will be all in all the improvement to, to add the four residential, and it will be four singles, that all of which be high-end finished marketed to the probably professional people, so I guess if there's any question, I'd be happy to answer. Mr. Schmidt, probably talk to the leasing part of the issue.
My name is Mike Schmidt. I'm a broker with Coldwell Banker Commercial. Excuse me, like Jim already said, when, when Jim first made application to construct the building, the highest and best use of the main floor was retail commercial. Since that time, of course, we've had a pandemic, we've had high inflation and the market for retail space just is not there anymore. We've had the property for lease, probably going on a year. I know it was for lease prior to that with another agency with no success. There's currently about a hundred and twenty thousand square feet of retail space available for lease in the, in the St. Cloud Wade Park area. So there's way more supply than there is demand. And that's why the highest and best use now is no longer retail. The highest and best use of that main floor space is residential. Now, to maximize value, if, if, if the economy was better and the situation was different for retail space, to maximize value for the owner, he would prefer to have it as retail tenants because they'd pay more rent, there'd be more income, there'd be more value. But the, the, the demand for retail space is just not there. And as John indicated earlier, that the parking requirements for retail exceeds the parking requirements for residential. So in terms of having more parking or more traffic, I think there's going to be less parking requirements, can be less traffic with the residential than it would be for retail. And as far as handling the snow, I think Jim already described how he handles the snow removal. So I don't think, I don't think converting the main floor space to residential is going to adversely affect how the snow is removed. So I, I, I hope that you consider all these things and consider amending the zoning to residential on the main floor.
Anybody else would like to comment for or against?
Just to clarify briefly, and, and not to undo your comment, Mr. Schmidt, but this isn't a, we're not looking at a rezoning per se. This is, this would be only applicable to this property because it is, it was approved as a planning development, so the ground floor residential would not extend to any other surrounding properties. This is one-off.
Basically an amendment.
Exactly.
And you had something to add?
There's been an abundance of empty retail space in St. Cloud since two thousand eight when the bottom went out of the housing market. Because at that time, prior to that, Mike Schmidt had a developer that wanted to buy that whole corner out. And unfortunately, there were three holdouts that wouldn't sell. But we, he had purchase agreements and everything else for that to be sold out and redeveloped. Well, in two thousand eight, the bottom went out of the, of the housing market and thus also grossly affected the retail market. It's been a buyer's market for retail ever since two thousand eight. There's been a lot of empty space in St. Cloud and Wade Park.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything they'd like to comment?
I move we close the public hearing.
Oh, second now.
We've got a motion in a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, so we're saying aye.
Aye.
Post in the public hearing closed at seven oh seven.
John, can I ask what are the actual number of parking places in front of the building? Then twelve? Looks like more than that to me.
What was the question?
How many actual parking stalls do we have now?
I believe it to be twenty, I had counted at twenty-four. I think Jim was, Jim had counted twenty-five. I had counted twenty-four. But the calculation right now, if assuming you had, you accounted for the existing residential and the apartments, if you went for one-bedroom apartments, that would take you to twenty-four stalls as a requirement, because it, it, it does, it would meet the, the minimum.
The, the requirement is two per bedroom.
Two per unit, regardless of whether it's a one-bedroom or a
Oh, okay, that, that doesn't hit very
They could be three bedrooms and it would be two per unit.
Okay.
John, and the whole red area he owns, is that all one lot now?
No, it's two separate parcels, but they're, they're under common ownership. So he, he can, owning that parcel, he can also utilize, I, when I say twenty-four stalls, I only, I only mention those that are on the, the southern parcel. He does have the stalls available on the, the northern, the, the, the pre, the older house and the garage there. So the actual count would be higher.
Yes, my point nowhere in Wade Park is there a apartment building with no green space, none. I mean, if they attached both lots, he'd have green space. And he could move the dumpster somewhere so it ain't by the road. It is an iso and I could see the garbage blowing across the road.
Yeah, I can, I can see that. That's a
Well, you need some type of dumpster enclosure somewhere. But I think he needs to attach some green space. I mean, that's the biggest thing. There's no place, he's mentioned the one to the west, the smaller apartment building. It's got green space. I'm not sure how this went through with being so close to Sock River Watershed District. All the waters run into the drain and out down to the river. There's nothing, no holding ponds where it goes to or I mean, you go to Kia and Hyundai, they had to put in ponds in their property to hold the water.
That would be delving into the engineering side, but it, it skates underneath because the, the property isn't that, isn't large enough to trigger the ponding or any of those requirements. It, it was something that was reviewed, you know, any sort of commercial or, or new construction project, basically bigger than a bigger than a house is going to trigger, you know, our, our engineers, engineers being involved as part of the review.
But can we have it attached so it has green space, so it meets some green space?
I don't think it really needs to be attached. I mean, it's under common ownership, so he can use it as he see fits, as he sees fit. But it, it was, it was approved and it's, and, you know, without having, without having any green space and there's not, you know, any of those properties kind of around and don't have a lot of green space themselves.
As far as the commercial property doesn't, but the residential's have green space. I mean, can that property be put under the condition of use permit? I guess just to try to control some green space with residential.
I don't know that we can tie them together. We, we, I would say that's probably the intent of the applicant is to hold on to it, but, you know, I, I don't want to jeopardize the, the existing project by the reason it was included as part of this request is because it is under common ownership, so it could currently be used or counted for, you know, any sort of green space or, or parking, additional parking or to put a dumpster, that would be a good thing to do. But my, my concern would be if, if you tie it to it, then, then it can never be sold separately if, if that would be the desire. If the applicant says, yeah, that's fine. You know, I'm, I would hang on to it and tie them together. We could certainly do that, but I would be reticent to, to try and force that.
I don't, like I said before, you can't even put a ladder up without going on the other partial to the roof.
I think that's probably part of why he chose to acquire the property because it is, it was challenging. I think he probably ran into some of that.
No, I don't, I don't think you can, you can back up and, and, and force green space to be there. I do think if
Even if it's a hundred percent residential, we should have something. Even single pair, people get married and have kids, but
If the garbage moving around and so on and so forth is an issue, I think some kind of enclosure for the garbage dumpster would probably be a, a good asset if it could be, if it could be worked out.
Thing is, that's something that we can do with the recommendation or condition, is it? Something with the dumpster?
That, that can be incorporated. Yeah.
Because I kind of like that idea as well. I realize that our, our hands are kind of tied. We're limited with what we can do about our desires for green space. And especially since this has already been done at this, to this spec.
They're changing the condition of use, so we could put some stipulation for some, I think, but
What are we going to do? Tell him he has to tear half of that building apart and off, so he has green space or get rid of some of the
If it's attached somehow, there's green space.
I thi, I think you can, you can do something with the dumpster. I think that's a, that's a relatively easy fix. You know, because as long as that space is available and perhaps
But if they sell it in five years, then the dumpster's gone.
Then the, well, then it would come back to its current location and you're not any worse off. You know, you could still, you could still cram an enclosure around it. That's certainly, there's no problem with requiring that. That's not reasonable at all. It, it just needs to be something that whoever's picking up that dumpster can access. And I know if they're at the corner there, it's probably a little tricky to get into. So they're just something to consider, but I mean, we could, you could require that the, that we work out a, a plan to improve the the dumpster or require dumpster enclosure and look at another spot to put it that's a little more out of the way.
I guess if the, if the parking requirements are met as per city standards, the snow removal should not change. If they've been getting along with it as it was, as it is, has been, I don't see a change in it, so I think it should be workable. My only recommendation would be to try to get the, the garbage container enclosed and try to remedy some of that issue. And with that recommendation, I guess I would make a motion for approval.
I'll second that motion.
We've got a motion to approve with conditions. All in favor, so we're saying aye.
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 Opposed, aye. Two for, one against.
Same as with the, with the previous request, we expect this would go to the city council on Monday, the twenty-sixth. Six thirty PM meeting for, for that.
New business?
Uh, no new business for tonight.
Move we adjourn?
I'll second that.
Motion to adjourn in a second. All in favor, so we're saying aye.
Aye.
Post in, meeting adjourned at seven sixteen.
Thank you. Thank you.